Proudly call the City of Hartsville Dr. Hahn a public hearing and regular city council meeting for Tuesday, March fourteenth, two quarter. Thank you all so much for being here. We have beyond a full house, and I know you're all here just because of your own personal interest in the workings of municipal government. That's just so exciting. Just thank you all for being here today, just to see how this all is made. Wasting no time, let's move right into our invocation and pledge. Councilman Matt, would you lead us in the occasion?
First of all, I pray that as we rise to the top of the altar, Father, thank you for this day, that we are coming to this house, Father, and yours towards all the citizens of Hartsville. Father, thank you for the presence of so many citizens today in our city hall. Father, we ask you invite you now and to be seen, and we pray that all we do is right and truth on your side. Help us, Lord, to do what is right and good, what is just and fair for every section, every citizen, and every servant in this city of Hartsville. Father, we pray now that you will guide us, Lord, and let us work of wholeness, versus the wholeness of one city of Hartsville, versus the pleasure of some of the city of Hartsville. So, Father, we ask you now, come unto our presence, and we want to thank the Lord for giving your son Jesus Christ, who came and was given fear and stigma to the right-handed Godfather all night, because we would not be glad before Easter. So, Lord, we thank you and we ask you for all these blessings, and we give you praises, Lord, and honor. Amen. This is Christ Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
To the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything justice, law.
Moving right along, our public hearing motion to read a reading of the approved minutes of February fourteenth, regular city council meeting in the February twenty-first, special city council meeting. So, I got three or four motions. You got two of them recorded there?
So moved by call, uh, second by any.
There we go. All right. Um, any questions about the minutes before we take the vote? All those in favor of waiving the reading approving the minutes of February fourteenth to twenty-first council meetings, please indicate so by saying aye. The opposed, the ayes aye. The minutes are approved. Moving right along to presentations. Charlie, you're up first.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it is great to be in Hartsville tonight. On behalf of the Municipal Association of South Carolina, I am presenting you one of our honor roll participants of our two hundred and seventy-one cities and towns. There are seventeen of our councils, you being one, that are honor roll recipients. That basically means that each of you, all members of council, all seven of you have completed our Municipal Elected Officials Institute of Government, created in nineteen eighty-six. It's a voluntary education for elected officials. You don't have to do it, like I said, so we commend y'all for committing the time and effort and getting skills for your citizens here in Hartsville. So, again, on behalf of the association, congratulations. I don't know if y'all want to get a photo or...
Photo.
All right, sir. That's fine, yeah. They took you. Go ahead, man.
Well, at least get them in the background. Here, we look at their comfortable seats.
I think it's always good to see you. Thank you very much. Thanks again. Special thanks to city clerk, um, just to keep him from staying on top of us. Three weeks earlier, three minutes, we still had it done. Um, moving right along to proclamations. Uh, we have a surprise proclamation tonight. Um, back down here. This is a huge congratulation to our middle school basketball team. Um, we have some visitors, I think.
Yeah, the head coach is assistant coach, and I see the majority of the team.
We all come home.
Thank you. Congratulations. Y'all be good. I don't want to hit something. All right, all right. The Hartsville Middle School Boys Basketball Team is here, and the city of Hartsville proudly congratulates them on capturing, capturing the twenty twenty-three PD Middle School Conference Championship with a thirty-six to thirty-three win over the Moore Lions. Winning over the Moore Lions was no small feat, as the Lions were previously undefeated. Previously. And our Hartsville Red Cross has beat them in their own gym, no less. These young people are just another example of how we here in Hartsville are a championship community, and we can't wait to see what you guys do in the future. Thank you so much for coming. Thank y'all again. Congratulations.
Any representatives here from the Red Cross, would you like to come up and say a proclamation?
Y'all want me to read this word for word, or... How do I? Oh, yeah, I'll just... All right. You ready? You written? Yeah, please. Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, my name is Michael Hespock. I'm the executive director of the Eastern Chapter of the American Red Cross, and in that role, I serve as a public face, but also in the elected official liaison. So, I'm at the core for each of our members of city council. The Red Cross responds to local disaster, predominantly home fires here, but our readiness stays ever-present with our friends at Robinson down the road. We just completed a drill with it, with the state emergency management for a nuclear event, and also had a hurricane come on top of it. Um, so, we do stand ready. Our local fire response last year in the city of Darl, uh, city of Hartsville, uh, we opened up twenty cases, assisted fifty-six families, provided over fourteen thousand dollars in direct financial source, uh, support, um, to those, uh, home fire victims. One of our local home fire responders, Richard Pucker, is a, a, a name that probably needs no introduction in this town, but I also want to commend the Hartsville United Way for the work they do for home fire victims after the fact. They probably, they do the most downrange, long-term recovery of any organization, probably in the state, um, and so just committed to the great support that Hartsville has for them as well.
Well said, too. Well, your work speaks for itself. Um, let me read the highlights of this. Whereas in times of crisis, people in the city of Hartsville come together to care for one another. This human, humanitarian spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross volunteers and donors. Now, therefore, I, KC Mayor of the city of Hartsville, do hereby proclaim this month, March twenty twenty-three, as American Red Cross Month, and encourage all citizens of Hartsville to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Thank you, appreciate you for working. Stay like here. Girl Scout League. All right. I think there's a beauty here for this one. Y'all go ahead and come up and try.
We'll let them be the shine. Ain't that right, Joe?
Nice. Thank you first of all, thank you both for coming here. Appreciate you being here. Um, whereas March twelfth, twenty twenty-three marks the one hundred and eleventh anniversary of the Girl Scouts of USA, founded by Julian Gordon Lowe in nineteen twelve in Savannah, Georgia, just down the road, and whereas its Girl Scouts unleashes the G I R L, go-getter, innovator, risk-taker leader in every girl, preparing her for a lifetime of leadership. And whereas with more than three million current Girl Scout, Girl Scout members nationwide, we'll be celebrating this American tradition and welcome girls from every background to join, I, KC Hancock, mayor of the city of Hartsville, do hereby proclaim this week, the week of March fourteenth through eighteenth, as Girl Scout League. In Hartsville, and applaud the commitment Girl Scouting has made to support the leadership and development of America's girls, and urge all citizens to join me in celebrating Girl Scout League twenty twenty-three. All right. Take the camera. Who wants to take a smile? Thank you so much. Y'all keep up the good work. Oh, oh, I forgot the card. Here. Got a, uh, badge for each other? Everybody get one?
It's all Girl Scouts. Ms. Matt used to say Girl Scouts. I don't use that phrase.
Yeah, this is the last one. All right, to recognize Disabilities Awareness Month, whereas more than five hundred thousand South Carolina residents and families are impacted. Can you come here to receive this, by the way? I skipped the skip. Yeah, please, please come up, I'm sorry. Okay. Whereas half a million South Carolina residents and families are impacted by severe lifelong disabilities, including autism, head injuries, spinal cord injuries, intellectual disabilities and related disabilities, without regard to race, gender, culture, geography, age, or economic class. And whereas the twenty twenty-three Observance of Disabilities Awareness Month celebrates the sexual partnership between people with and without disabilities, as well as the increasing involvement of people with disabilities in education, employment, and community activities. IKC Hancock therefore proudly proclaim the month of March twenty twenty-three as Disabilities Awareness Month in Hartsville, South Carolina, and encourage our citizens to work together to promote increased opportunities for people with disabilities, to recognize the many contributions made by the people with disabilities in our community, to our community, and to honor the dedication of the caregivers who bring support and hope to their fellow citizens. Thank you so much. Good to see you. Thank you.
I wanted to bring recognition to National Women's Month, and I thank you all for being here, all the work that you do, and the Girl Scouts is special. As you see, I'm the only woman on the house, so you girls, go get it, do what you need to do, maybe you'll sit in my seat one day.
All right. Woo!
All right, Ms. Harriet, you're up next.
Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to address you about an issue that I have been concerned about for more than ten years now. I've written a pre, uh, prepared presentation, which I appended to each of you, but let me just say that my family has lived on James Avenue for more than seventeen years. We moved here from Lee County, and we moved to James Avenue because it was one of the neighborhoods, one of the few neighborhoods in Hartsville that was open to African-Americans at that time. We have remained on James Avenue because we love our neighborhood. For all those seventy years, for every improvement that we have needed, we had to either do them ourselves, or come to council and plead for improvements, such as paving the streets, putting in drains, getting police protection. It was never just something that we should count on because we were citizens and taxpayers of the community. I do not believe that every neighborhood in Hartsville deals with this. We face so many issues in this community that are not addressed by council, by the state, and so today I've come to say, it's time. It's time for you to understand that the people who live on Sumter Street and other streets back over as far as Marion, we deserve some consideration. I've driven around the city for the last few weeks and looked at neighborhoods. I've been in each of your neighborhoods. None of them have what you see in those pictures that I have presented to you. I know that you cannot force the cotton gin to move, but you can, as city council, make them improve the area that you see in those pictures. I have put in several transportation requests over the last few weeks. They come out, dump a few, uh, little bit of gravel, and go back. On my way here today, I hit, I know, at least ten potholes on Fletcher Street. This is not what you or I, this is not what I, I don't know what you call it. This is not what I would call an all-American city. I live in Hartsville because I choose to live in Hartsville. I've lived in many other cities. I'm asking you to ask your staff to investigate those issues in that presentation and do something about it. We've been asking for years now. I'll answer any question that you have.
Thank you.
First of all, for coming here and addressing concerns. Do we have any questions about this?
I don't have any question, but I definitely agree with Ms. Harriet. It's caused, uh, for about the last year and a half, I'm dealing with the surrounding cotton gin, especially the truck tractor up Sixth Street. Uh, about eight months ago, city manager and I met with the owner of the cotton gin, mixed stuff like blue next to truck tractor. Off Sixth Street, uh, and Fifth Avenue, there's a better route. And I do also agree with Ms. Harriet because the cotton gin definitely impact our community for safety, health hazard, and it definitely, uh, degrades the quality of living, so we definitely need to address that. In my opinion, the situation with the cotton gin and what's going on with, with, with being a system in that neighborhood, actually going on, the county, the city, and the residents have allowed it to go on for six plus years, and that's my opinion on that, and I will continue to address issues with the cotton gin. Along with Harriet, I know we both have filed complaints with, uh, Secondhand DOT for some of the potholes, they come in and do the banage pass and delete. I think we need to have a really focused on, uh, resolving this with the cotton gin with the city, uh, system of Hartsville. Now, believe it or not, it does also impact, in fact, other parts of the city, because you don't know it. I live at that building twenty-four seven, so does Ms. Harriet. That noise travel at night over at the College Avenue, as people have brought it to my, I know that for actually, cause at night, certain time of year when it's dense, it gonna travel for miles. But anyway, we need to definitely take what you brought to the on record and be, get serious about working something out with the cotton gin. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, let me just say, um, Councilman Delane, I blame the citizens too, but as a citizen, I've been before council numbers of times. I've met with city manager numbers of times. I've talked to you numbers of times. I can't go out there and take a shovel and fix the street. If you turn off of Sumter Avenue, Sumter Street onto Fletcher Avenue, not only is the street a mess, but the private property. You see that, those big holes that I have to drive through every day? And I don't drive a dunes buggy, I drive a decent car, and I live in a supposedly a decent neighborhood. If I sound angry, I am. No, I'm mad. And this has gone on for too long. The citizens in that community deserve better, and if they won't come forward, I'm here to speak for them. I am an advocate for my community. I don't have to live there, I choose to live there because it's my neighborhood, and I expect that as, I, I own four parcels of property in that neighborhood, and I expect because I pay city taxes, that you give us the services that we deserve. And I could come back with some other issues with tr, with, um, maintenance and other issues, but today I'm concerned because I'm tired of driving through that mud.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, we appreciate it. We, y'all...
Ms. Harriet, I wanted to address you as well. Um, I am concerned about the area as well. I have been through, I have taken pictures. I used to sit on the county transportation committee, and the city does not have the capacity to go out and fix private road, well, or roads like that, but as a suggestion, the last meeting that we had, we had at Jerusalem Baptist Church regarding the cotton gin, and I wanted to bring to your attention, like Ms. Delane said, the parrot lot right down the corner, they bought that lot, and from that lot to where it turns on James Avenue is a pure mess, and we need DOT and the cotton gin to be responsible, because the cotton gin, their trucks and their hammer machinery is the cause of the potholes that she's speaking about. The roads, I, I hate to drive my car down there, because like she said, it's a mess. When they go down with this, um, machine that they brush the street with, it looks like it's technically called a boot, but it's a big ball of dust. So, I am totally in, um, agreeance with Ms. Harriet.
Well, let me just say this, Matt. I'm not here to talk about the streets with the city, because I understand that's a DOT issue, but where the street ends and it's private property, the city has their authority. You go around and condemn people's houses. Do you see those buildings in those pictures? Do you see that trash that we have to look at in those pictures? That's on private property in the city of Hartsville, and you have authority to condemn people's property and make people tear down their houses, then you have authority to make those people clean up that mess.
And that's what we have been thoroughly working on.
For how many years now? I, I'm telling you, I came to council twenty years ago about that property across, uh, across Fletcher Street and Sumter, and asked them to clean that up, or put some barriers up, or do something. It still looks a mess. You got the pictures, I took the pictures yesterday.
Well, thank you again, and thank you for keeping these issues top of mind for us. Um, all right, that brings us to public comment. Dr. Hartschel, if you would sign up, if you would, um, if you would, uh, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to figure it to us.
Okay, yes. All right, so I'm Lady Hartschel. I work at the government school, I moved here nine months ago to do it, and I moved into Oakdale, the little, um, thirty-two acre neighborhood next door to it. It used to be called Mill Village, and it's over a hundred years old. Uh, my house was built in nineteen oh eight, and I bought it from Robert Snyder two years ago. I see a friend here all these years. And recently it came to our attention that property adjacent to the, um, neighborhood is starting to be developed. I, I went away on a four-day weekend trip, and they just started clearing the land and came back and it was completely cleared, and trees had been uprooted and, and taken away, and this is over about four, four point four acres. And some, one of my neighbor, uh, ladies who owns properties in the neighborhood talked to the owners of the property that were walking around it, and the investors, I'm not sure who they were exactly, and they said that they had planned, they're planning on building eight, uh, apartment units at the end of three streets in that neighborhood, Emery, Mill, and Norwood. Those three streets have each eight houses on it, and they're about a tenth of a mile long, and so, you know, I moved to that community because it's quiet. So, one of, you know, Hartschel needs to increase the number of living units in the city. Um, I understand that that's one of our challenges, but, uh, one of the most difficult challenges to planning more intense community development has been protection, protection of living conditions in the adjacent neighborhoods, um, especially privacy, the solar access, because these properties would be built to the south and to the east of existing homes, and the character of the adjacent residences. Um, preserving livability standards is critically important because of the success of mixed-income neighborhoods, depending upon the support of the adjacent neighborhoods. Car traffic will increase dramatically, this is the thing I'm most fearful of. I lived at the end of one of those streets right next door to where these would be built. Americans average three point three car trips per day. So, round trip, they would go by my house six point six times. If there's eight new units at the end of each street, one and a half cars per unit on average, this amounts to eighty car passings per day in those eight houses on those streets. We are a neighborhood of forty-three homes. On the acreage that this company, Kelly Hill, own, they could, they could, uh, build up to a hundred and fifty-seven two-story, two-bedroom apartments on the eleven acres they own. We have forty-five homes on thirty-two acres. This would increase our density by a factor of ten in a small neighborhood that really only has currently three outlets from the neighborhood. Um, I don't believe, and others in my neighborhood don't believe, that our zoning laws are prepared to protect the livability of our neighborhood citywide. I mean, we are zoned for multifamily housing, but I don't know when that happened, but like you said, we've been a neighborhood of senior family homes for over a hundred years. And, you know, I think the city needs to share the burden of putting in a hundred and fifty-seven units. Um, to put it in a neighborhood where it's in the back of the neighborhood and the only outlet is to go through the rest of the neighborhood is, I, will be ill-conceived. I'd like to see, I mean, I can talk more later about what I'd like to see, but...
Yeah, well, thank you. We, uh, your, your neighbor was here in our last meeting, shared some of her concerns, and just as you mentioned, like, the growth is, is also good for the city, it's just important that we are mindful in the way that we grow and how we develop.
Right.
And, and you're, you're, you know, it's, in, in a timely, because there are ongoing conversations about our zoning codes and adapting them, um, and this is happening right in the middle of it, so it's very, very good time to have these discussions. Thanks again. Yeah. All right. And that is ended our public presentation portion of the meeting. Um, Mr. Manager, if you would.
So, if you is the manager of Robert's precinct, of course, the city board will continue to remind us, remind me, Statement of Economic Interest filing is read thirty twenty-three, March thirty at noon.
All right.
Thank you, Kenzie. I have not, but I'm waiting because it's, I'm gonna read by a bit later on. Um, but please, yeah, if there's any, any trouble with it, please, please do reach out to you and share myself or the ethics commission, so also help get very responsive right now, because everyone has the same timeline. Um, I wanted to talk to you, we had a parks committee meeting, uh, and I'm...
is to go through the rest of the neighborhood is, I believe, ill-conceived. I'd like to see, I mean, I can talk more later about what I'd like to see, but...
Yeah, well, thank you. We, your neighbor was here in our last meeting, shared some of her concerns, and just as you mentioned, like, the growth is, is also good for the city, it's just important that we are mindful in the way that we grow and how we develop.
Right.
And, and you're, you know, it's, it, it timely because there are ongoing conversations about our zoning codes and adapting them, and this is happening right in the middle of it, so it's very, very good time to have these discussions. Thanks again. All right. And that is ended our public presentation portion of the meeting. Mr. Manager, if you would.
So if you and the other representatives, of course, the city board will continue to remind us, remind me, Statement of Economic Interest filing is three thirty twenty-three, March thirty afternoon. Thank you, Kenzie. I have not been awaiting because it's going to be by date later on. But please, if you have any trouble with it, please, please do reach out to you and share myself or the other commissioners, so they'll help. They're very responsive right now because everyone has the same timeline. I wanted to talk tonight, we had a parks committee meeting, and I believe Councilor Bob D V is the liaison, he was there, and Kenzie was also able to come as well, and they proposed a, oh, doesn't happen well. They had indeed talking about expanding their role. Currently, their role is confined to look at parks only, and I believe, you know, they're very, a lot of them are avid bike enthusiasts and whatnot jogging and cycling, and so the scope of their current definition of their role does not allow them to really talk outside of parks. The, I would invite you guys into reading their proposal, they have some amendments to it. I believe it'd be a good idea to have them come to a workshop and have them explain to you what they're trying to do, what their goals are. I think that their, the changes they're making are a little too broad in that sense because we already have a parks and recreation department. Don't really need to have another advisory committee to do exactly what the parks are doing. But I think that their ideas, some of them are very good. So I was looking at potentially having them come to the April meeting and see if I was going to be able to do their April workshop, if you guys are okay with that, and make them better explain to you guys what's going on.
It sounds like they have interesting ideas they have, would love to have them come and tell us more about what they're doing.
It will be considered essentially a joint meeting, but we'll invite them to come and talk, so I'll share some of those. The next one is a very exciting thing. So after, and most of the council is aware of this, but after a few years of building through some new reaccreditation status, our Main Street program is wholly reaccredited. We are one of five cities in the state that is a Main Street accredited program. We are, thank you. Staff worked very hard on this, this took a long time, it was almost a two and a half year process to get this thing done. That means that we will be a mentor and help other cities, and with the new expansion of our Main Street district, which is encompassing more downtown, also some Sixth Street, it's a really exciting time for Main Street. So we're very excited about what we can do, and we're looking at the future of what we can do expanded. So we're very excited. So Main Street, we are one of five again in the state, in the state rather.
Very, very, thank you, staff, all of you who helped make that happen.
And one last note, this is an exciting thing for us, so March twenty-third is Take Your Students to Work Day for the middle schools. So a lot of the middle school students who are here actually will come to work with their parents if they're allowed. If they're not allowed to go, the city in years past has actually taken them, all the students that day who couldn't go to work with their parents, I guess child labor there is more than that for here. So we'll put them to work here in this, you know, working the streets and whatnot. It's a long, it's a tough road. I did it a lot, but we will have about fifteen students here all day, and it'll be towards the end of all voting about government, so maybe they will be in your territory one day, which I'd be excited. But hopefully this year as well. So we'll have, as this one of the March twenty-third, we have a bunch of students eager to work at the city very much, so they're excited about that.
That's all. Good, fantastic. All right, our consent agenda, Mr. Nolan, thank you once again to all of our departments, our department heads and, and other staff for preparing those reports. I'm particularly excited to see the new brand for the farmer's market. That is exciting. But moving right on to unfinished business, item number six, which manager would you publish in number six?
Yes, sir. Public hearing final reading of ordinance four 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 seven. The ordinance of the City of Hartsville, amendment chapter fourteen, article two seven thirteen dash thirty-one, City Chair, important. The lady states business license programs will never extend any recorded informal agreements between the city and the past day regarding business license issued to you and other matters related to it.
Great, thank you. If you'd like to see item number six, please come forward, state your name and address, keep your comments to two minutes or less, please. Hearing none, moving on. Well, I would entertain a motion to approve the public hearing final reading of ordinance four 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 seven.
Seven.
Seven. Have a motion in a second. Do I have any, do we have any questions or comments from council? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of approving the public hearing, or the final reading of ordinance four 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 seven, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and four 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 seven is approved. Move on to number seven, Mr. Manager, if you would do your thing.
Yes, sir. Public hearing and final reading of ordinance four 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 eight. An ordinance to provide for the issuance of sale of not exceeding one billion one hundred thousand dollars, general obligation bond series twenty twenty-three, of the City of Hartsville, South Carolina, prescribed with purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters related to it.
Great. And to read here, this gives us the option to do this method, this...
Well, this will, this will move us forward with the bond process, and should something else happen, we are moving forward.
Exactly. Okay, public hearing, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on four 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 eight, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to two minutes or less. Nobody's jumping up excitingly. A closer public hearing, I hear a motion to approve the final reading of ordinance four 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 eight.
My commotion would approve ordinance four 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 eight. Second.
A motion in a second. Any questions or comments in this ordinance before we vote, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll hear a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance, the, yeah, the final reading of ordinance four 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 eight, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and four 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 eight is approved. All right, the new part, a resolution three twenty-three one, Mr. Manager, if you would publish it.
Yes, sir. It's approval for Hartsville Police Department H P D to enter into a memorandum of understanding, M O U, with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives, A T R, for the access to the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, N B I N, this is all for you, can data through the N B I B A enforcement support system, N E S S.
That's just ridiculous. Support resolution, just hold for a minute. Okay, I would hear a motion to move forward with the resolution zero, oh, zero three twenty-three zero one.
Motion that we pass, resolution zero three twenty-three oh one.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. I have a question on this. Is this a renewal or a new opportunity?
It is a renewal.
I think it's a renewal too, it sounds like. Anyway, are there any other, any other discussion from council? Well, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution zero three twenty-three zero one, please indicate so by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution three three zero one is approved. Moving on to three twenty-three zero two, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. It's approval for Hartsville Police Department H P D to enter into a memorandum of agreement, M O A, the regional, with the Regional Organized Crime Information Center, R O C I C, for access to a regional information sharing system, R I S S, program.
Okay. I would hear a motion to approve resolution zero three twenty-three zero two.
Mr. Mayor, so move and we approve resolution zero three dash twenty-three dash zero two.
Second.
Thank you as well. Any discussion on this one? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All those in favor of approving resolution zero three twenty-three zero two, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution, that one is approved. Moving on to the first reading of ordinance four 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 nine, Mr. Manager, if you would publish it.
Yes, sir. It's authorizing and directing the City of Hartsville to enter into an intergovernmental agreement related to South Carolina local revenue services to participate in one or more local revenue service programs to execute deliver one or more participant program supplements and other matters related to it. For information, we've already given this, they changed the title of the program, so we just have to renew it.
It's just updating it.
This is our, I'd be able to invest my money into a whole thing.
Okay. Well, I have a motion to approve the first reading of four 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 nine.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Seems pretty straightforward. All right, I'll hear a vote. All those in favor of approving the first reading of the ordinance four 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 nine, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. First reading gets approved. Item eleven, ordinance forty-four fifty, Mr. Manager, if you would publish it, please.
Yes, sir. It's approving the adoption of the six member, six single member district redistricting. Plan for the City of Hartsville, such plan provided for council member to be elected from each district in the method of election.
All right, I am not proud to tell you that I, for a while, thought this meant we were creating a new body, and I was so confused about what it was for. And I was just about to call you when I figured it out, and I just outed myself to public. Anyway, I would hear a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance four 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 fifty.
So move. Second.
Who's got a second?
I got a second.
Okay. Any discussion of four four fifty?
My point, I have this map on the wall there, the old maps and the, and the new maps. Any citizens who would like to see the differences there?
If citizens are not familiar, there's only a few bits of property moving from one district to another, and it's just to balance the population amongst the districts due to change in population versus within the city.
I can find this on the website.
Not yet.
And this, is this on display in City Hall?
It is. About here.
But, okay. I think, I think I think of that approach. Anyway, sorry, I hit the mic there. Any others? Any other discussion on that, or I hear others?
Once we make these changes, then those will be in our plan of progress.
Excellent. And, um, we have these on the wall here, it, we're doing the press for this, so the public will know what we're doing, and then anytime everyone comes looking at this or asking questions about it, it's here. And we're gonna be getting this from Stephen to do an article on this as well. By law, since we no longer follow the Justice Department approvals, as long as we hold a public hearing of this, we're good to go, but we will go beyond that. Our citizens have our tune and know about what's going on in the district.
Correct, and that public hearing will be in a month.
Yes, sir.
Assuming here, for a first...
And we'll have some information out through our P I O, and we're getting Stephen and others doing article on this as well. We will be happy to answer any questions we can, and to any suggestions or comments.
Anything else from council? Hearing none, have a vote. All those in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance forty-four fifty, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, forty-four fifty moves forward. And that is, hearing no objection, we stand adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you again for coming, everybody. Really happy to have you.